Can we call the meeting to order, please? Can we call the meeting to order? Thank you. This is the November meeting of Rollins Plan Board. Thank you all for coming. On the agenda tonight, first up is the Shady Lane subdivision. Look. So just to give a little background, I assume you're accusing yourself?
Well, I'm not accusing. Continue with your next question.
Okay. It's good you'll be a voting member for tonight for this matter before the board. So at the last meeting, we decided to seek legal counsel for the land use attorney of the town. He suggested that we need two variances for this particular project. One, to make the existing lot more nonconforming than the new lot. I know that the applicant has some additional information they want to share with us. And then we'll open it back up for public comment. So Paul, you want?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
We'll just start by saying that the last planning board meeting a month ago we had, the board did open a public hearing on the matter and took testimony from the applicant, the applicant's agents, and the public. I think just as a matter of protocol at this juncture, the board should vote as to whether the application is complete.
Yep.
And we can thereafter start the clock and move on.
Okay. If that's the way you want to play it, that's fine. So I did some research and in the planning board guide for local officials, I did find that the planning board... Okay, so the choices are to accept the application as complete or not, basically. I believe we cannot not accept it as complete based on other conditions, other exemption from the ZPA.
Backup, Mounds, you said you cannot not accept it?
Right.
You must accept it, aren't you?
That's according to the...
I would disagree. I don't think you can accept it. If someone needs a variance and they don't have it, I don't think you have the authority to accept it. And I don't think you can accept it. I don't know if it really matters because to accept and deny or to not accept, we get the same result.
Yep.
And I don't want to sell you on one position or the other, but generally boards will not accept an application as complete if there are zoning flaws that haven't been cured by the zoning board. And that's been our protocol for years. But I don't, you know, if you want to accept and open and open public and then have a lot of discussion, I don't...
Yep. So if the board does accept the application as complete, accept public comment, then we have the choice of approving the application, conditionally approving it, or disapproving it. Is my understanding.
That's right.
So, I mean, I'm only going by the information that I was able to uncover. But I'm going to leave it to the board to make the motions and decide this based on the merits of the application.
At this point, if you're asking me if the application that is submitted, plans that I saw last time, the plans that have remained unchanged since last time, as complete, I see them as complete. The fact that whether or not it doesn't meet zoning violations haven't been cured or that it needs to go to subsequent boards, yes, that is a deep fact. But if you're asking at this point in time if the application is complete to be submitted, I think it is. So I would believe it in that direction.
You making a motion?
You ask for comment, that would be wrong.
Okay.
Sound like a motion.
I would entertain a motion to a second.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Connolly.
Okay, well, in the interest of time, we did present our plans last month, so I don't see the value of presenting them again. It's a very simple two-lot subdivision. Five acres located on corner of Rollins Road and Shady Lane. 190 feet of frontage on Rollins Road and about 700 feet on Shady Lane. After subdivision, both plots conform in terms of, in our opinion, in terms of area and in terms of frontage. Both plots having more than that, but frontage on a municipal road. It's a class six road, but it is a municipal road and access from same. So as such, we would ask that you consider our application for approval and move to approve it. And just for the record, we have received a copy of Attorney Radigan's opinion as solicited by this board after the last planning board meeting. Attorney Radigan, correspondent with this board, in his October 10, 2017 correspondence. It makes five points, none of them which we agree with. We believe that, again, it has frontage. It is a municipal road. It is a municipal road that frontage and access can be derived from. So as such, we believe it's an entirely actionable application. With me this evening at the table is Jason LaVoy and his wife Megan. He is sitting behind him. And Attorney Bill Shaheen is with us as well. I don't know if any of them want to weigh in, but I think I've said everything that I need to say at this point.
Okay. I think the board members saw Attorney Radigan's letter. So we have the advice of an attorney that the town uses. We have the applicant with their own attorney in dispute with these points. I'm kind of looking for input from...
I can give input in that I did see Attorney Radigan's and I have written plans as well. And I think a lot of it depends on, you know, you had mentioned making an existing lot less conforming by labeling more conforming because of how you're viewing Shady Lane, whether it be the perception on one side or the other or interpretation of the wording. In my mind, if you're asking for input as you were, I think it doesn't meet the guidelines of having proper road frontage on a proper... I'm not going to use the word proper. As I understand, and once again, my own perception, this is just input, that the second lot doesn't meet the classification of fronting on a what we call road, street, way, however the terminology is. I think it's the background fails out unfortunately.
Can you guys just swing that door closed, people? Thank you very much.
Well, it's a very third degree. I have to classify those. So a variance from the ZPA is needed? And there's also the issue of nonconforming law. So there's two variants of that.
The zoning doesn't say it has to be a class five. The Rollins zoning...
Subdivision regulations say that, that which we passed away from Section 9.1.5. If I could just add one thing, Mr. Chairman. Point number one of Attorney Radigan's correspondence states that we are setting forth a more nonconforming lot because we're taking 10 feet plus away from it. And that's because this 10-foot sliver has been proposed to be dedicated as part of Shady Lane to allow Shady Lane at some point, should it ever need to, to have a full 50-foot wide right-of-way. And that's just not part of our own goodwill. But that is also part of discussions we've had with this board and with the previous chair over the past year. Furthermore, it's part of municipal, this municipality's policy recently adopted with regard to lots and building permits on class six highways. It states therein that if it's not a wide enough right-of-way, if it's not at least 50 feet wide, if you can add land to it by a giving of a slice of land, then do so. And we are doing so. So, you know, it really, without belaboring the point, seems to be putting us, according to Attorney Radigan, into a catch-22 situation. We're trying to follow the rules here. And as such, we're being flagged with a penalty flag saying, oh, no, we can't do that. You've got to go to the zoning board adjustment.
Well, but Paul, you've got to admit you're creating that problem. If you had 220 feet of frontage and you gave up 10 feet, wouldn't be an issue.
True.
True. So you're creating, I mean, you admit you're creating, you're taking away...
We would stipulate that we're... How would we... You don't have adequate funds.
We have 400 and something feet on Shady Lane.
Well, I guess we disagree. You know, I don't...
Under state law, it states that you're class six can be frontaged. So how, there's, in our deed, we own 800 feet on Shady Lane, which is adequate frontage under state law. So how is it...
Listen, I've worked in many states, in many, many communities in New Hampshire. I mean, probably 30 municipalities in this state, maybe more. I don't know one of them that would consider class six road...
State law does.
Jason, we're going to disagree, right? We're going to disagree. And apparently our attorney disagrees. So, you know, I mean, it's an argument you can have with the zoning board. And if they...
But we can't just agree. You've got to...
I'm not making up anything.
You clearly are, though.
Okay, I'm kind of making up stuff.
But it is a law that we can, you're denying me frontage. You're denying me the frontage on Shady Lane, which is a public road. So how, why are you not assuming that it's frontage?
I'm not a voting member of this board. I'm the board's technical...
But you're advising them.
Yeah, and they can, you can, you should make your argument to them, not me.
That's why I'm...
Anyway, this catch-22 needs to be on the record. Municipal policy recently adopted needs to be on the record as well as Attorney Radigan's opinion and our disagreement with it.
It's not a policy, Mr. Connolly. They're setting guidelines to guide the select board. And there is a difference. I think you know that. There's a difference between policies and guidelines, so...
I apologize. I used the wrong word. But if guideline is the proper word, then...
And guidelines don't have force of law, right?
True.
We're always splitting hairs on that.
So does the board agree that 100 feet being on a class six road is adequate frontage?
I would answer the question that, if that's called before here at the planning board with, and with attorney opinion, you know, outside counsel hired for this specific situation and not saying... My thought is that, is not my position on this board is this board to make that decision when we have a zoning board adjustment. And...
But the...
Because you have fair due to be heard. Absolutely, you have fair due to argue your point. Absolutely, you should be heard and respected for that. But as I sit on this board, I don't have the knowledge or the responsibility or, you know, the ability to proper respect you being heard. I think that is a zoning board of adjustment. And we have that process here.
But why would I first spend more money, second go to a board that I don't need to go to? Whereas your attorney clearly states a class road can be a public road. And I assume Shady Lane, a class six road, remains open to the public, which it does. Basically, we're splitting hairs over whether the road should be paved or not. And he clearly states in his rebuttal to Miles that he doesn't see it to meet all requirements. Whereas we have other dirt roads in town that have been accepted. We have other dirt roads in town that have been accepted as being used as roads, whether they're private or class six. So I guess why is it...
But specifically in here, Mounds, I do not read where it says on advice of this particular attorney, he's very familiar with the situation, where he says Shady Lane, as it sits today, with the enhancements or changes that the interested parties are willing to do to make it more performant. If it is his opinion, if indeed that is the build of the lot. Specifically that question. I know this is a lot about, you know, the capacities of the road currently, but not specifically as it pertains to their cost.
He outlined Shady Lane and he's pretty much casting, in my opinion, he doesn't know the answer whether the road specs that Paul designed in the plan are adequate for vehicular traffic. I think that question can easily be answered.
No, I think what he says in the letter is that they don't meet all town standards.
So what are the all-town standards?
The road standards and the subdivision, right? Classified highway standards.
So then you can give us a conditional approval of the paved road?
It'd have to be 24 feet width and paved with a...
Is that really what the town wants, though? I mean, I'm trying to minimize the...
I think the easiest rule, I think the best recourse would be to get a variance.
I don't need one, that's what I'm saying. It's easier for Paul to draw the paint on the plan and get a continued approval. I'll pave it 24 feet if that's a requirement. And then we meet all-town road specs and then we can approve it.
I would agree. I think if you want to build a town road...
I still think there's an issue. So the planning board doesn't have authority to pay for it?
No, I think, I think Jason's absolutely right. If they dedicate 10 feet of right-of-way, so it's a 50-foot right-of-way, they build the road, they build that road to town standards, which means with materials, then it's a classified highway. And they have the rights, then the issue goes, then the issue goes away. Or any, you know, I mean, I suppose you could...
The issue goes away, but it flips the catch-22 onto the town because nobody wants it paved.
Oh, I mean, that's not an issue. I don't know anything about that, but...
I mean, I think it's, I think we're going way above and beyond the specs of a road. If that's what's going to get it done, we're going to pave it, we'll pave it.
Okay.
And then neither lot is nonconforming and we meet all aspects.
Yep.
I would agree with that.
Sure. Okay.
So I'd ask for a vote on a condition of approval that Paul puts on the board.
You're getting ahead of yourself a little bit because we're going to open this up for public comment.
Sure.
Are there any members of the public that have comment at this time?
I have a question. It's slightly difficult. I just came in, so excuse me if I'm repeating or asking something that's already been addressed.
Sure, address me, so...
For 26th Rockland Street. But to change the road from a class six road to a class five road, does it need approval by the whole town at the legislative meeting to be accepted as a road?
Well, except, oh, you want to speak on it?
Accepted, it's a down road, but, so I'm still trying to figure out the section from Radigan, but Shady Lane's a class six road. All right, a separate approval of the board's election to upgrade Shady Lane from a class six road to a class five town road required. And that can be accomplished by the selection during a highway layout, which can be done via veteran assessment for, say, 23122A Rollins 4, where a town meeting can vote upgrade the status of a class six to a class five town road. So how are we, are we getting ahead of ourselves?
It'd still be a class six road. It would just be built as...
Be, exactly, yeah. There's no obligation of the town to maintain it. It would just be like laying out a brand-new road in a subdivision. It was built to town standards. The town isn't, you know, agreeing to accept it.
Right. So then there would be, then there would be MS4 implications for adding additional sort of surface to the town?
Yeah, and I have no way of suggesting that's the right solution. And I think the solution is to get a variance and to build a lesser, you know, and to get, to have them approved. Because I don't, I mean, to spend $30,000 to pave a road, that's, I think it's ridiculous. I would get a variance or try to get a variance first, but it's your call. You know, I don't know, and I don't know what the cost is to pave, it's a long road.
600 feet, right?
More than that, isn't it?
I'll pave it.
444 is, yeah, 60, you'd have to have 650 feet of pavement, that's...
I don't know if that answered your question.
Oh, it answered the question that the road can be built, but it does not have to be accepted by the town.
Correct.
Yep.
And then for it to be maintained and accepted by the town, it would have to go through a town meeting. That's from what I'm getting from the conversation.
Is that how it works in Rollins? Some towns, they select them themselves.
Well, we...
Yeah, no, we would lay out or...
You, the town meeting is required for it.
Lay out for the town meeting.
Except for... Okay. Mr. Van Duvers?
Yes, Alan Van Duvers, 84 Rollins Road. Question I have is, looking at a class five status road to build here or... So that has to, coming off a state road, that has to be brought up through state specs? Not some side-street specs?
Town specs.
It would be town specs.
Which has to be dug down several feet?
Yep.
Several hundred by several hundred feet, I think. I think Jason was saying about 450 feet.
It's about 600, I think it's about 645 feet, but, yeah, somewhere in that range.
Times by 50 feet, correct?
Well, no, no, the road is, the road, the right-of-way is 50 feet. The road width is, I don't know, 20, 24, Paul? I can't... You've got to graduate the scale.
We've got to graduate. The municipal subdivision regulations call for a 24-foot width, typically in a 50-foot right-of-way. However, even that's often waived depending on where the subdivision is.
Depending on the traffic.
The safety of not having overkilled the road for no other reason to meet a, an arbitrary town spec.
So if the road is brought up and paved, which we agree to do, then in the future, we could come back and ask for the road to be accepted by the town?
I don't believe to this board, I believe the select board.
Right, to the select board.
Yep.
But the state still follows that road being built, correct?
No. The state has no, the state wouldn't have any jurisdiction over the road. Only the town.
Then the Wentworth family, when they built their, their road for their facility, Greenview here in town, that was overseen by the state. Why?
No, that was overseen by the...
The state made many, many visits.
Because they had jurisdiction under alteration of terrain permit?
Not, not, you weren't, but we, did you have...
Yeah.
But the state didn't inspect the road.
No, they did.
They may have done wetland inspection.
They do wetlands, they do alteration of terrain.
The town inspector, I think it was civil consultants probably oversaw the construction of the road.
The state had nothing to do with the road.
Yeah.
Town road.
Yeah, my name's Schur. I think this, I think the town's...
So we're looking at a class five road that's 24 feet wide? Does that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
I thought roads are supposed to be 50 feet.
No, 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 the right-of-way, the land, which is what they have shown on the plan, has to be...
Right, and he'd have to donate some of his towards that road.
And he already has, he's donating 10 feet of it from the whole length of Shady Lane. Not necessarily, he doesn't necessarily need to do that, but he needed to do at least 200 feet on the new lot. So, but he did it the whole way, it's on Shady Lane. So it would be a 50-foot road, 50-foot right-of-way with 24 feet of pavement in the middle.
Why wouldn't he just pave the whole thing correctly?
Well, you can't pave 50 feet, there's not a road around here that's 50 feet wide.
There isn't.
Maybe 95. I mean, I don't... The typical town road is... I don't know, because Chinburg's a...
Yeah, which is...
It was 22, 22.
22, curb-to-curb.
Eight, yeah. That was curb-to-curb, 22 feet. And then that's got 15, how did that, I can't remember. So, no, and you couldn't physically, there needs to be drainage and stuff on the side of the road. So there's no room for a 50-foot road.
Mr. Hammond?
No, they answered my question.
Any other comments?
I would just like to follow that the Chinburg property has a smaller road because the neighborhood insisted on them putting in sidewalks. So the road is not as wide as a normal road. And I had another question is if, and this might be more directed towards my... The town just recently passed the 600 feet on a road. Does, if this road comes up to specs, does that extend the 600 feet further? Or is it...
It's a class five road. Class six road.
Sorry, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Don't see anybody.
All right. You guys have the info. You, there's no rush. Oh, yes, at this point, we're going to close the meeting for public comment.
Mike, can I ask Paul a question?
Of course.
Paul, if, I can't remember what you talked about. There's a wetland here. If this is going to be a town road, is there going to be a wetland impact there or not?
It's, if it's going to be wide into a 24-foot wide paved surface, it's possible. With the, with the proposed upgrade to a 18-foot wide gravel surface, it would not require any impact there.
I see people still thinking. I apologize, I should correct this guideline. So with the paved surface all the way up to... You'd have to go 600 feet, 25 feet.
Yeah, 200 feet into the new lot, so it's about 645 feet or 600.
Do we have, is there a wetlands impact now you're suggesting, John?
Well, if you look right at the new lot, they were avoiding it before. You see it right here.
That's it.
That goes in the new right-of-way. So it's pretty clear there's going to be a wetland here.
And on the end here as well?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know. They have quite a bit of frontage here, 200 feet, 2 feet of frontage. They don't need...
We don't need to pave the whole thing.
They don't really need to build the whole, they need 200 feet of frontage, is what they need. So they, I don't think the wetland on the end would be impacted at all. It's just this one here.
And what would that impact be to pave it?
Well, they're not culprit, well, they're going to, you know, they're going to muck it up. They're going to, you know, fill it with, you know, whatever pseudo-material it is, you know, crushed stone, crushed gravel, and then, and then paint on top of it. So, you know, I mean, is there an impact? Sure, any kind of fill of wetland there is an impact. It doesn't seem like, I don't know what, I don't know how high of a value it is. It seems like it's a pretty isolated thing on the side of a road, so... You know, that's something that the, you know, the Conservation Commission are way in on. Or DES, I, you know, but there's, there's an impact. I wouldn't, I guess I was suggesting it was not, it's not an major impact. Stuff like that happens all the time. Paul, I'm just trying to think of, you know, between the pavement, wetland fill, is it, I know you guys want to try to, you want to reconfigure this plan to have a town road, but is there a way to restructure this so you can, giving you the opportunity to try to get a variance? Or do you just not, is that off the table?
I don't think I need one.
No, I, I'd like the alternative.
I mean, it's a lot cheaper, 200 bucks to go to the ZPA than...
If you're going to pass something, I'd like it in the alternative, that he can get a variant, he can try for a variance, but we've got to bring this to a conclusion so that if he can't get the variance, he can use the alternative.
That's fine.
Okay.
I got, yeah, I'm just trying to, you know...
Yeah, no, I agree. Thank you.
Because I just, Jason, I see this is, you know, this is not a cheap road. You've got to build it well. Cause I just, Jason, I see this is, you know, this is not a cheap road, you gotta build as well, and this means a permit, you know, more, you know, a notice of the conservation. I think the conservation commission will weigh in on these, so it's not, so not a demerit.
I think it can be accepted as a gravel road.
Well, that, that would be the variant, if you could give it to us, if you would consider approving it in the alternative, either get the variance or build the asphalt the road. That would be appreciative because we've been doing, he's been here now two years, no one's fault, we're trying to get this thing done, so that we can go in the sprint.
I don't, I don't think it's a bad alternative, it's a great alternative, just.
I can just throw out one thing that I've been pondering, and I, I think maybe you're, you're heading in that direction. I don't want to throw a wrench into the gears here at all, but there, there's no compelling need for the surfaced pavement to be twenty-four feet. Other than the fact that it says twenty-four feet in the town specs.
I would agree.
Would the board entertain a waiver?
Those are the board members. I, the only thing I will tell you, Paul, is that the board has entertained waivers before and has met some resistance by the emergency services.
Okay, to, to our surprise.
But that, and I think Schimber may have been one of those, and the, the other one was.
Clonan Road, Claggman.
Yeah, we wanted a narrow road and the fire chief said no.
That's only fourteen feet though.
How, I would. But no, I'm not, I'm not, I think the board is supportive of a narrow road and to pave a twenty-four foot road for three houses is ridiculous. But I, you know, it's, it's not, this board would probably, I would assume they would, again, I shouldn't be doing out of speaking here, but this board would probably ask for the input of the fire chief. And we have not had great success getting him to, you know, agree to a narrow road. Cause it, it's ridiculous.
I understand.
What about the policy that the select board just put into place that spells out exactly what the road should be?
That's the guideline.
Is there any guarantee on all this?
I'm going to issue him to a building permit.
Say that in your mind.
Yeah, the issue him to a building permit. If it's still classified as a six plus, class six road.
So, yeah, so if this lot was, if this lot existed today as a backlot, you know, the way it is, and you went to get a building permit, that would both would apply. I mean, I think you conveyed an argument to the zoning board of adjustment that, hey, look, you know, the, the sort of have, have, have these guidelines, can we, can we agree to a lesser standard road or something? But that's, that's not, I don't think it's our, it's, it's, I don't think it's in the planning board's ability to approve it unless it's a town road. So I, I think the choice that you have is.
Build a town road.
What's that?
Build a town.
A class, build to class five town standards, I'm sorry.
Okay, the, the proposed base that we show on the second sheet of the submitted plans, six inches of crushed gravel, over twelve inches of bank run gravel. All to state spec, all over geotechnical fabric, meets the base structure criteria.
Same as the town standards.
Same as the town standards, exactly the same.
It's just width and.
It's paving. It's just width and the paving.
Yeah, yeah.
I have just a follow-up question, you're not paving the entire front of the additional backlot, or, or raising to, or raising to standards or changing the, the surface. But there is a natural curb cut, so to speak, for lack of a better term, to that back area, right? There's a natural formation of the land for accessing it, and where you're suggesting to build the road to other standards, it, it exceeds that natural entry to that backlot?
We're actually, we're actually proposing the driveway into lot.
So you would go past the, the, uh.
No, we're, we're proposing that driveway, driveway right where the existing cut is.
You're changing the cut that's been there for centuries, or, or that's, that's sort of the way it's always been accessed.
John, I have a question, can you leave? A gravel road in the town of Rollins Road cannot be accepted by the.
Sure.
It can be.
Absolutely, and if you can convince voters to do it, I mean, it's, I, I was a select one for many years in another town, and voters.
So I.
Sure.
Back to.
I don't know if they would, I mean, I don't live here, so I don't.
Well, I'm gonna ask. What would, what would the variance be needed for, I guess is what I'm asking. If we're agreeing that it can be gravel, then what do we really need the variance for?
For two things, one is that you're taking away the frontage from a non-people law right here.
But we already disagreed.
I, 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 I'm just, hey, wait, well, no, I, I, our, our attorney's opinion is that unless this is built to class five. To town standards, it says to, to the highest town standards is what it says.
Right, so I guess, can the highest town standards be gravel?
It's a question I think that the board needs, you know, the, the.
Well, to whoever the question.
I mean, that, that, that's why I would, I, I literally would love, I'm just, I'm begging you to try to get a variance, so this is, issue goes away. But I don't know, I, I don't know if the zoning board grants variances like these, I don't know if they've ever experienced anything like these, this before, it's a unique situation.
Right, I agree.
For, for two hundred bucks, you can roll the dice and see what they give you.
Right, so what do you think, so, I agree, just exactly what he just said.
Because I, you know, then everything goes away.
The, the, the crux of what I'm seeing and hearing here is indeed, it seems as though you, you've done every enhancement to the land to make it as conforming as it can be to the situation. And ultimately, what I'm hearing that you're asking for is either give me, you know, approve all the other stuff, what I'm really, because currently as it sits right now, just to summarize, the land, the road doesn't meet standards that you can build on. And that would, we, we know that, or, so they say, if this was approved other than the very, you know, under the condition thereof, because an approval is absolutely nothing unless you meet the conditions, so we all understand that. The condition you'd need to be in a variance so that this falls into the guidelines as need be gravel or not, and, and width, that's, that's plan A. Or plan B is get the, the opinion of the town to recognize this road as it sits, therefore you're satisfied the other plan of your conditional approval. And the rest of your paperwork is in line with, you know, whatever engineering plan you need to further go for building and whatnot, but the crux really seems to be the road. You're hearing that it doesn't meet standards, and you're willing to make it meet standards, I think that's another opinion we need, but if you're asking for an approval under those conditions, I think that could be a path that we could be discussed at this meeting here now.
Mike, you lost me halfway through.
I agree with you, make the town accept the road as is, or make the town agree to a lot, or make the zoning board of adjustment or whatever board that needs to be to make the variance that need be, that's.
The application could be approved on, on, in my mind, in the following conditions, that you get a variance from the, the Z B A for, to be allowed to build on a class six road. And variance on, on, on road, on a class five road.
Or, or, or built to.
Well, let me interrupt though, or, the zoning board could say, we disagree with the town attorney, we don't think a variance is required, and then I think that, it wipes that out, so that's the other option.
We're not trying to stand in any way here, we're just saying, if you're asking for a path and direction to pursue.
Let's just say they take that, they, and I didn't mean to interrupt, Mike was gonna say, or the alternative was to build this to town standards and. But my, my, my point is that, let's just say, they go to the zoning board, and they, and they apply for the two variants suggested that they're required to have in the letter from John Ratty. They go to the zoning board, the zoning board says, we disagree, our interpretation of the ordinance is different, we don't think you need it, they're gonna be, they're the ones that are gonna say yea or nay. If they say, we don't think you need to be here, or maybe need one and not the other, they grant it or they deny it, then, then we, then that changes the game. So. I think that's sort of where we're at, either build this to town standard, build this, you know, a minimum of two hundred feet of frontage on this lot, and the rest of the way to town standards. Or get the two variants suggested in the letter from the town attorney.
We're, we're amenable to conditions exactly as such.
Paul, would you be amenable to a continuance, or do you want this? I, I mean, I'd, I'd be more comfortable continuing until you deaden the Z B A, that way we'd know where we're going. Cause there's other things here, Paul, like the, like the, like the wetland fill, that we don't know about, that, you know, this is the first time we've discussed it, cause we didn't know there was going to be a town road. I don't know how it lays out in there, I haven't even looked at it, nor as a town engineer, I don't know if a town engineer would look at it, but, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not trying to slow this thing down, I, I want it done. But I, there's a lot to sort of, you just threw the town roads out tonight, and I, and I haven't really given any thought or, or looked at it. It, I don't, it's not gonna slow, unless you're a hundred percent convinced you're gonna build a town road, then we'll, then we can act on it. But I, if you think you're gonna try to get a variance, I'd rather continue this until.
I think we're, you're asking for us to get more variances than we need, though, I thought the variance was for the road either being gravel or paved.
No, there's two variances required, one is for the reduced frontage, and the other is for, for the, the lack of, the lack of frontage on this lot, so there's two frontages.
I disagree with the frontage. We have the frontage.
Well. I, I think the applicants would entertain an approval conditioned upon the construction of six hundred and forty feet of shady lane. To town subdivision standards, twenty-four feet of pavement, and the subsurface as we've already set forth. And should we need to, you know, if it comes to be we need to have a wetland impact or what have you, we can, we can address that at, at a appropriate time. But I think to wrap a, a ball around this, that that's possible, we're, we're. We, we would be happy to walk away with that, and I, I think if we wanted to ask the zoning board to vary that, I guess we could. Hate to use them as a, as a super planning ward, if you will, that's really necessarily fair, but.
If that road's built to town standards, so the town would have to accept it.
Nope. Nope. Nope, it has to go through the process, has to be put on a warrant, and then town meeting has to go to a town meeting and make the case. Has to vote it out, and I know, has, has town gone to S B two, so it's still a storm and a rock well, town meeting.
I think it would show a lot of good faith if you gave conditional approval upon the two conditions, you bring it up to, even though the town's not gonna accept it as a class five road. But certainly the conditions will be a class five road, and either do that, or give the alternative to go to the zoning board and get a variance or try to get a variance. I can tell you right now, he hasn't really known in his own mind what he wants to do, and I think that it would be beneficial to everyone involved here. Considering how long we've been doing this, on this issue, this one subdivision, that I would like the board to vote up or down on their request here. And you can make those conditions and give them the alternative. I, I agree with the consultant and your advisor who says that it's kind of foolish to build that asphalted road for two houses. But it has to be, it has to be, and so it's a big price to pay, and I agree with that as well. But that's a decision I think my clients have to make for themselves, they're gonna need time to talk about it, and if we give clarity and give direction for everyone involved here. Exactly what they have to do if they want to subdivide their lot, and also give them a free shot to talk to the zoning board of adjustment for a variance. Cause I also disagree with your attorney's letter, and it's way off base, and I can have my fun with that at a later date.
In those conditions, verbatim, can be placed on the plan prior to any signature.
Okay. So I think we have the options in front of us. Approved unconditionally, approved with the conditions, or denied.
Or continue.
But they don't, they don't want to continue, so.
That's right.
Doesn't seem palatable. I would, I would leave it, entertain a motion for any of those options.
If I was to make a motion for approving of the conditions, I'd like to hear once again exactly what the condition would be, and it's tough to approve, but I've seen it in writing, but.
I mean, I understand what the conditions are, and I'm not here to stand in any way, and if indeed, whether it has been past history or not of ever a town, or if there's any special permissions that need to be given by the town where, for one of its roads to be upgraded, I don't know, and that's not my area to know.
But if, if a, if this subdivision was allowable on, on this road, if this road was seen as a standard town road, and truly the, the issue at hand is the road. And there's options of addressing specifically, bringing up two or seeking variance, but that's really their decision. The plan as a whole, taking the road aside, I really don't have a problem with, and the issues that, not personally, but the issues that are of concern in this plan. Are addressed specifically within the conditions of approval, the conditional approval, I'd be interested to hear about it.
John's writing out some.
I'm just afraid. I'm afraid to make any motion without going.
No, we should crystal clear what we're going on here.
Right, and, and to have input from everyone concerned exactly how those are worded, so there's no miscommunication about the action that's being taken tonight, so that everybody hears the exact same wording. That's exactly gonna be on any motion I'm making.
Here are the conditions that I have, number one, the shady lane shall be upgraded to, to a class five road standards. For a minimum of two hundred feet into the new lot, so I think it's around six hundred and forty-five feet. You got that?
Condition number one.
Condition number one.
Option number one, so it's not sixty.
It's around six hundred and forty-five feet, plus or minus. The more, the, the more important number is two hundred feet into the new lot.
Do you have that?
Number two, Paul, we had to discuss this because it hasn't come up, but the underground utilities are required based on the backlot, that's a requirement of the subdivision. We didn't ask for a waiver, but.
And that's what's shown on the typical D T.
Good. All, all utilities would be underground for the new lot. Number three, all state permits are required, including dredge and fill permit, and, including but not limited to a dredge and fill permit.
If applicable.
If applicable. Number four, town engineer to review the road construction plans and oversee construction inspection at the board of selectmen's direction, they oversee it, not us. What am I, number five?
Yep.
A certificate of monumentation is required for the backlot, just showing the, the, the bounds of its, stamped by a licensed answer. And then the final one is surety for the road construction to be determined by the board of selectmen. Maybe they can do something where no building permit is issued until the road is built or completed, or something like that, I, you know, however, so I can work it out. That's what I.
Typically a bond has to be posted for the.
Or, or, or go to the board of variance.
Variance, you said nothing about seeking a.
Oh, right, 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 and my final one is that.
I thought that was the option.
Uh, I'm just trying to think how to work this.
Yeah.
The applicant reserves money to.
Seek a variance.
Seek a variance for, and I don't have the, the letter, but the two, the two variances noted in that letter, you can say that, in, in the, in the letter from the town attorney.
And. They, typically when we, when we're asking to construct a new road, if you have to have a bond, so basically, if you, if you don't finish it, if it's not built to actually to the specs it's supposed to be, we keep them up. So you can't, it's typically for, for larger projects that have been developed.
But the law says you can build or bond, so you can, you can build the road and then not build until you, it's done. So you don't have to, that's, that's not, that's. That's, that's, it's the board's luck, but I just want to make you aware of it, that some, some sort of surety, whether you don't build on the lot till the road's done, is gonna be required. Is, is that?
That's everything I agree with.
You, you can have this, you can read it.
Yeah.
I was writing for myself, not you.
We prepared to make a motion.
Do you have a, do you have a state septic approval?
State subdivision.
You have seen, I'm sorry.
It is, it's already shown.
Right, 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 okay, I'm sorry, it's been a while.
Is there any other input from any other parties concerning irregular wording? Everyone, everyone here heard what you had said, and not there's any other input or. And not there's any other input or if that truly answers the question, then we're looking at.
Yes, we're all in agreement.
So that's clear.
It took us quite a while.
I think Mike's going to be in motion over there. Oh.
Kevin's.
Okay. Do you want to read off the, the list of?
I'm just going to reference it.
Okay.
You have it all set right.
Six conditions?
Yeah, so it's shady lane should be upgraded, upgraded to a class five road standards for a minimum of six forty-five feet plus or minus two hundred feet into the new lot. All underground utilities for the new lot. All state permits, two files, including dredge and fill.
If applicable.
If applicable, but not limited to.
Yep.
Town engineer review road construction plans and inspections. Certificate of monumentation, surety of road construction to be determined by the selectmen. Applicant reserves the right to seek variance for the two variances in the letter from the town attorney.
The six conditions.
I'd be willing to make a motion to give a condition of approval based on those conditions.
What I want to say though is if they get the variances, a lot of those goes away.
Right. Do we need to reference which ones go away?
Yeah, so Paul, the obviously condition, and I, I, I think it's understood, but we should make it clear. The condition, if, if the variances are granted, condition one goes away. Condition.
Simplify it. If variances are granted, construction standards go in accord with the recently adopted municipal guidelines.
That's between you and the board, yeah, sure. But yeah.
There are specs in place, right?
That's fine, sure. I guess that's fine. Or, or is that a shilling in the plan?
No, but we, we, he can't get a building permit unless it's upgraded in accordance with the guidelines.
Okay.
It's still going to remain class, uh, class six where it's been brought up to class.
You want, you think that's important to put in there or not? I don't, no?
It's, it's, it's redundant if you do.
Okay, cool. All right, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor here. To accept, to approve this permit, the application's sorted with. Second, one, two, seven. Go ahead, here's second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approved unconditionally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leo, all right, next up.
Can I ask you what's four of those conditions to move to my to address?
Sure, um, what was the second?
I don't think it's seven.
One, two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
You back in?
Right out.
Sorry, um, we're going to take a quick, short, short recess. Let everyone know.
Um, I think tonight we're looking at the lighting plan?
No, unfortunately, that's, uh, I mean, I'm not a lighting engineer, so. Okay. Obviously, I don't want to blame anybody, but it's, he gave me the photometrics, but he gave them to me on, you have a copy of it?
Mm-hmm.
On like twelve different pages, which is useless to you. He segmented it.
Okay.
So I asked him to put it on a site plan, uh, so, but, but he says he has to send it to the lighting manufacturer and of course, you know.
I get you.
They tell you it's whatever, three weeks, so as soon as I get it, I'll get it to you. But, um, so obviously I want to have it before the next meeting.
Can, can we, can, can we ask, if, can we do one thing? Can you ask Tovin to, to give us a plan set with like an existing conditions, a site plan, lighting and drainage on it? So, because we're getting everything piecemeal, it's sort of hard to figure out what's going on. But if we had a plan set where, you know, there's three or four pages with, you know, with, with all the information on it. Because this thing's getting so busy now that if he tries to put photometrics on here, you know, he can do lighting and landscaping in one plan. And then I think the drainage plan should be part of the plan set, you know? So it's, it's going to be existing conditions, proposal conditions.
Okay.
Lighting and landscaping on one and drainage on the other, I think, you know? Unless he thinks there's, but again, just, just to keep getting this stuff like a little bit here and a little bit there.
Right.
It's really hard and.
So on the one, the site plan, you want existing conditions, site?
No, I want, well, I, the first page of the plan set, you can have this, just give them a note. Existing conditions will be one plan. The second one is either the, the site plan, so it's going to be what you're doing to it. The third one, I think you can put lighting and landscaping on the same plan, you know?
But you want all four of these in the same one?
No, 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 this is four plans.
Oh, okay. Or you want to.
Four pages, four page plans.
I think I have existing conditions.
Well, I don't know, I, I'm just sort of getting everything.
Maybe you haven't got this.
I, yeah.
Let's see. Got existing conditions real quick.
But he doesn't even have lighting done, so.
No, well, he doesn't do lighting, lighting gets done by the lighting guy.
But then he'll put it on the site plan.
Okay.
So he'll show them the pole locations.
I get you.
I don't know why he can't do it because.
Well, he can do pole locations now, but he can't do the photometric.
But he's got the photometrics.
Okay.
All he's got to do is take those.
Maybe he can.
Well, I mean, it's up to him.
I will, I'll totally ask him about it. He actually, believe it or not, is coming to the next meeting, so I can ask him about that. But yeah, if he, if he can do the photometrics, I'll do it. That's existing.
Yeah, so that would be page one, then the site plan would be page two. And, and just give us a, a full size, you know, a full set of plans with everything on it, so we, you know.
Okay.
Because we're, like I say, it's sort of.
So I've got existing, I've got site plan, the lighting, I can have.
And he can do lighting and landscaping in one.
I'll do a level lighting, yeah, totally.
And then drainage.
And he's done the drainage.
Yeah, so all he can do is put it together in the plan set so we can look at it.
There's the drainage, he's got the drainage before and after.
And.
Which coincides with the report.
And then the other, the other thing is, I don't know what your, what your timeframe is, but this probably ought to go to, uh, I'm assuming you're, we're going to send this to civil consultants to have them review it. So you might want to hook up with Jay Stevens over there.
Okay, because I got a color set of these for him.
Yeah, you can either hand deliver it or.
I'll just bring them to him.
You know where there are.
Yeah. Right, so.
You know where there are, is it?
Sometimes. Yeah, okay. So I'll just give him my copy right now and then I'll totally do that, yeah.
No, I will swing over there tomorrow, meet with Jay and just have, and, and, you know, and he may want to. There's other things on here, and I'm sorry to be.
Yeah.
But there's other things on here, like you asked for a waiver for the parking aisles. It's something that I would like to have him, I mean, I have an opinion, but he's an engineer. I think he should look at that. So what I'd like to do is actually give him this copy of the waiver. And just say, and, 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 because he, he's going to do a complete review of the, of the plan set.
Okay.
You know, again, I have a perspective from a planner, from a planning side, but he, 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 he's going to know how cars turn in and out. I think he should advise the board on that, about the, the parking layout works.
Oh, so, so will he meet with me?
Yeah, if you call the office or just stop in.
This is Jeff Lee Thomas's office.
I'm a civil consultant too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
He's not our engineer.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, if you call in, if Jay's not there, you can make an appointment with him.
Okay.
Be with him then.
Yeah, no, that would be great.
But he'll want a copy of all, of all, of everything, your drainage report, all the plans.
And, and, and I think we really, the board's going to want them to look at the, the parking configuration too. So I would give him, I would give him everything that you have.
Okay.
The lighting is, you know, I, I don't know if he's going to care about that. We can probably deep handle that ourselves, but the drainage, the site plan, waivers.
I have these three, I don't have the lighting, so if I can go, I can go in.
Don't worry about, I, get, get him the existing conditions, the site plan, the drainage, the waivers, and I think that's enough to get him going.
That's fine, yeah.
But like, just, you know, give him a holler and see if, you know, you know, you can go in there and meet him and give him, hand deliver anything.
Yeah, I don't know how quick he operates, but obviously I'm trying to get everything. Is he fast? I think he's first.
I have no idea what his schedule is, so.
But that would be awesome because, yeah, I'm trying to get all this stuff in order for the next meeting, obviously. So, so I don't really need to read this, and if I'm going to go over it with Jay, I'm just going to wait.
Well, no, I think you need it. I think the board, I think, I do think the board, because the board's going to have an opinion.
Okay, yeah, let me read it because this is all our waivers. If you read the parking table, you probably can't on the smaller plan that you got. But, um, it says, um, obviously there's a change of use plan, that's why we're here. But it says, um, let's see, proposed parking is sixty-four spaces. So we have four handicap spaces. A waiver is required under section four A. So basically we don't make the parking requirement based on our calculation. If you look at the calculation down on the parking table, it says total parking required eighty-nine. So we took the first floor. Uh, we, we called it retail, I don't have a tenant yet, so I don't know the use, but I'm just trying to stay middle of the road on this stuff. So if you take first floor retail, you've got fifteen spots, second floor retail, fourteen spots. Actually, it's highly unlikely that if you're retailing the second floor, but.
Jeff, this is probably your calculations, though, because in the first line you have one for two hundred for retail and the second you have one for four hundred.
No, but that's in the zoning.
Retail on the second floor?
Yeah, second floor retail, they give you.
Oh, really?
Yeah, which, actually, that's why I took that calculation because it's middle of the road.
Sure.
Like if you actually take office, it's more restrictive. I would need more parking if I just went straight up office.
Yep. Okay.
To tell you the truth, because the building's so large and the space is so open, it'll probably be like a manufacturing mix, like for instance, a brew cup, right? If a brew cup goes in there, they're going to be making beer, but they'll have like a little tasting room, right? Where few customers will come in, but mostly they're making stuff because it's a factory. So it's hard for me, but I'm just, I'm just going middle of the road because that's an average of three hundred square feet. You know, if you take that square footage. And then on the third floor, I showed him my plan that I, I wanted to do office because I thought that was a good use for the third floor. So I did use the two fifty. And then obviously the fourth, the residential is clear, that's two and a half. So if you add up all those based on the use we're proposing, you've got eighty-nine. So, uh, we're proposing sixty-four, so we're obviously under. I mean, if you look at the site plan and the survey, basically I've pretty much maxed out uh, what I can do for parking. This front part, I've added twelve, uh, these spots are added. Right now, my existing parking is here, so I've added one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I've added eight spots on the front, which aren't there currently, which requires a retaining wall, I have to actually cut into the hill because I'm on hillside. So for me that, to cut into that hill more than that would be extreme and, and I think it would detract from the site because then you'd have a giant, um, kind of, uh, a really imposing wall right there, which I don't think makes a lot of sense. And then I would lose green space. You know, it, it gets steep right here. So I'm, I'm going to propose to add these spots, which does add a little bit of runoff. But I'm trying to, uh, come as close as I can to the parking standards, but not totally obliterate the site with pavement. Because, you know, honestly, like the, the way they're written in most towns, we run into it. It's, if you want to beat the parking regs, it looks like Walmart. And I just think towns need to relook at it. So thank God there's a waiver option because I think using the waiver, we might be able to come up with something that works and doesn't totally diminish, you know, the aesthetics of the site and obviously the, you know, the drainage capability. So if you read the waiver letter, it says, um, please accept this letter as a request for waivers pertaining to the current application before you regarding the property at seventeen, uh, seven ten Main Street, Roansford. We're requesting a waiver from section four parking in the site plan regulations stating that first floor retail requires two hundred per space, second floor retail requires four hundred per space, office requires two fifty per space, residential two point five per space, uh, two point five per unit, sorry. According to the site plan parking table, we would require eighty-nine spaces to be in compliance. We're showing sixty-four, that's twenty-five less than required. Waivers requested on the residential parking standards due to the applicant proposing one bedroom apartments, which would never require more than two spaces as more than two people would not be occupying the units. Hence at nineteen units times point five leaves ten spaces left. So I've lopped off ten spaces by getting a waiver for two spaces per apartment as opposed to two point five. The waiver is being, uh, requested on the commercial standards due to a shared parking use calculation in which residential tenants wouldn't normally be demanding parking during business days while commercial tenants are using the facility. So we're going to actually try to reduce the parking requirement based on a shared use calculation. Currently, the commercial use of the building requires forty-one spaces and the lot is providing a total capacity of sixty-four spaces, leaving a surplus of twenty-three spaces if no residential tenants are on site during business hours. If half, just as an example, if half of the residential tenants are at site, on site during business hours, that would add nineteen full spaces to lot. In parentheses, it says, uh, half of thirty-eight spaces, which would be residential requirement if waiver is granted, dropping requirement from two point five to two. So forty-one business spaces plus nineteen residential spaces is a total of sixty spaces occupied at full capacity, which is still four under the amount we're providing. So, uh, the sixty-four spaces using our shared use calculation would comply and be more than ample to serve the site. The second waiver being requested also pertains to parking section four of the site plan regs, which requires ten by twenty spaces. That's in your, in your ordinance. On our site plan, we have shown all non-ADA spaces as nine by eighteen. So on my plan, the ADA spaces stay in compliance, but we've reduced the other spaces to nine by eighteen. Many towns are currently using a nine by eighteen standard due to the diminishing size of vehicles in this era of energy efficiency and conservation. A ten by twenty requirement would require more pavement to reach the same parking capacity, which only adds to more unwanted runoff and less open space. Because of the size of this old building, making a reasonable attempt to come close to the parking regulations will certainly require some flexibility. And this is one area that an advantage can be gained with a kinder and softer result for all. So obviously we're going for the nine by eighteen standard, which is less than your ten by twenty requirement. The last, and that's what's shown in the site plan. The last waiver requested also pertains to parking section four of the site plan, which probably will be a civil consultant issue. If you look at the site, it's a little choked on the railroad ad entry. And it's also a little choked out here where we've added an extra space. Goes from twenty-four to twenty point seven. Um, and that's like midway through the back lot, between the solar panels and, and the island, and then also as you enter, it's a little choked, but then it opens right up and it's in, in compliance. So I, I don't need to go into that because I, I guess I could talk to civil consultants about that. It's two just points. And then obviously beyond those points, it opens up again, so. Obviously, I don't think we're going to have a lot of traffic, honestly, in the back of this lot. I think most of the traffic will be here at the entrance. But in order to meet the seven and a half foot setback, so that we don't need a variance, we've kind of stayed steady on those lines and then working with what we have so that we, we're in the ordinance as far as the seven and a half foot parking setback. So we ended up with a twenty-one there. If you wanted me to take out a bunch of spots, I could, I wouldn't need that, um, uh, waiver because I could make the twenty-four, but I would probably lose like three, I'd probably lose three spots here and I'd probably lose like another spot out here. So that would be four less spots. So, um, I, I would totally entertain that if you guys had, had an issue with that two-way traffic, uh, point. But trying to kind of like ju, do a little juggling act here, try to balance it. So either get more spots, uh, meet the two-way requirement, or you get less spots and, and, you know, you don't, so. So that's what we did to come up with our parking outs and that's what the waiver letter is about.
Okay.
But again, I don't have a tenant, so it's kind of arbitrary for me to throw numbers out. If I went with the manufacturing, obviously I'd probably be much closer to not needing a waiver. But I don't want a tenant to come in, wants to do some retail, go down to the town and then the town says, well, you don't want to park, you know what I mean? Then the tenant has a problem. So I'm kind of trying to stay in the middle of the road and, um, but I also don't want to obliterate the site with pavement. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to cover?
Uh, I think tonight was basically parking.
Okay.
Um, drainage, I don't know if you have any questions on drainage, I probably can't answer them. I do know from reading the report that we did increase the runoff on the front because we had to expand the lot. On the back, it actually reduced it, believe it or not, because of the retention pond and, and then slowing it down here with this. So, so in the back. And, and then slowing it down here with this, so, so in the back, the calculations show it's a reduction on the front. It is a slight increase because we had to add parking. But other than that, it's, it's very slight. If you read the report, it's uh, under, under five percent or something like that. Well, I don't know what those actually, I shouldn't answer that, because the engineer could probably give you more insight into that. But uh, I guess civil consultants would have, um, you know, go with that, and they'd always call me engineer, really, and do it for us.
All right, so let me just ask a couple of quick questions.
Absolutely. Jeff, where are you standing there?
Yeah.
Did you resolve the property line, not discrepancy, but question?
Yeah, Brian brought that up.
Yeah.
And then I confirmed with him, and then I also talked to the surveyor, and we think it's good.
Okay. So this concrete slab right here?
That already is non-informed, yeah.
That's on Brian, that's on third property, okay.
Yeah, that's just, I think it's an old coal chute from my boiler.
Just a question, and this one-story addition, is that there?
That's already there, yeah.
Okay. Um, and my final question was, you should ask your engineer if you need, I, I don't know what the requirement is for a van accessible space, but. You know, you may, you should make sure you comply with that too.
I think he did it when he added the four, so that's van accessible, van accessible.
Where do you see that? In the, the front here?
Yeah.
Where are you seeing van accessible?
Well, because of that alleyway, isn't that van accessible?
I, I, I think so, I'm not positive.
Okay, I'll name it.
You should just make a note on there that, you know, because I don't know what the standard is, but for someone handicapped, I think you need to have a.
Okay.
A uh, van accessible space. You can take this plan, so, and I know it's on there, so.
I'm pretty sure that width is what makes it van accessible.
And then my final question is, because we're fighting green space and stuff, why do you have thirty-four feet in aisle width here? Can you bring that in?
I could, but we didn't wanna choke this existing, so we didn't wanna choke that, but I can, I can bring it in.
I was just trying, the less cutting into the hill, the better, you know, I, I mean.
Yeah, I would love that, because I don't like a giant wall. I, I, I would be soft with that.
It'd be easier to move the driveway over three or four feet and, and bring that wall over, you know?
I could totally do that, I just didn't wanna get into like the town, you know, going crazy when I changed the curb cut or whatever, but yeah, I could. I could totally tweak that over, I don't, the only thing, reason I wanted a little more than twenty-four is because that's like deliveries, so.
I'm not telling you what to do, I was just asking.
Yeah.
If it makes sense to pull it over and, and reduce that a little bit, you know, I don't, I don't think the plan would have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, it would reduce the runoff a little bit, which is good, and it would actually um. Um, be okay with me, because then the wall doesn't have to be as high.
But you gotta also make sure you're delivering vehicles, and I, I'm not sure how it would, it's like.
Yeah, we aired on the, on the uh, upper side on that, just because of the turning and um, deliveries and I don't. I was, I was just talking to the neighbors that railroad Ave, like that, here railroad Ave, the, the trucks hate going up there, like, got a lot of complaints about it. So, but then again, you know, there's holes here, I mean, this, you know, it's not a great.
And does this road right connect from here to the back lot today?
It doesn't.
Oh, it does, you can't get through there?
No.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Um, at this point, I think we'll solicit any public input, if there is any. Sir?
Yep, uh, upon reviewing all this.
Can you say your name and your.
Steve Fallon, four twelve Railroad Ave. Uh, upon discussing this at home, we have a son who's handicapped, he's uh, permanently in a wheelchair. And he uses Railroad Ave to commute down to the little store there in town all the time. And a concern came up about the fact that if we increased the choo- traffic dramatically on Railroad Avenue. There is no sidewalk or way, he would be competing with the traffic, which is barely big enough for two cars. Um, and that's something I want to find out if, uh, what kind of accommodations can be made, or what. How that would uh, impact his plans.
There isn't any crosswalk there, there isn't.
Pardon me?
There isn't any crosswalk across um, railroad over to Main, is there, across Main is there there?
Uh, right there, by Main Street, yeah.
Right.
Right. Which would, if he were to try to go to that route, then he would have to go through the post office parking lot.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I don't wanna do that either, if I try.
There is no crosswalk, it, it's over by town, it's right on.
By, by, by front, yeah.
Is there space for a sidewalk on Railroad Ave?
There's barely enough space for two cars.
Yeah.
That was, and based on the prior discussion about road width and all that, um, we were both questioning. If our road actually meets standards for the road.
Probably not.
Okay.
It would've laid out long before.
No, I, I understand that, but.
I wouldn't imagine it does.
Yeah, because that's, uh, you know, being a resident there, uh, I have a concern about his accessibility.
Is there, is there, is there right, do you know how wide the right of way is or not?
Um, I mean here?
You probably know, yeah.
Uh, well, if you had a ruler, it's one inch, no, one, so it looks like about twenty, twenty-two, because one inch is twenty feet.
There's a pin over there, though, so I don't know.
So you're, you're over.
Go to your existing conditions plan. No, I just, I didn't know if those were in the survey document.
It's about twenty-two feet from my line, but then that's a lot less. If, if that's true?
I just wondered if it was a fifty-foot right of way, if there was even room to a sound, a, a sidewalk.
If they put right of way, it'd be halfway in my yard.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't imagine it being that. You, you don't think there is?
No, if you put a sidewalk there, there's gonna be a lot more people crossing tracks. But sidewalk would be nice.
It's a narrow right of way.
If we even have the list, to be honest with you, John. Well, there's also.
There are a lot of roads in the village that we don't have.
Okay, I get it, yeah, okay.
It was just a.
Sidewalk would also accommodate the people from your apartments.
Yeah, no, it would be nice, because everybody walks, even the guys working for me, they walk down my lot, and they walk right down wherever that is. Everybody goes to the store.
Right.
See, I love sidewalks, dude. They're awesome.
Committed on the.
A red road side of.
He's committed on the side.
That shows on Railroad Ave.
The balance of, no, could they live on it? I don't know, we don't have a sign up, so do we?
For what?
Posted for, for parking on Railroad?
No.
Not posted, right, so.
No people.
People do, right?
Can and do.
Yeah.
I park in the road, I park actually on the gravel part of the road.
So if, if a. That's not gonna be your problem, that's gonna be, that's gonna come to me eventually.
When I bought the building, it was occupied, obviously, there was forty employees there for years.
So Jeff, where are your tenants, the, your residential tenants, where are they, how are they gonna get to the store, if they wanna go out and grab something?
Well, they have options, they can walk through the building and come out the front entrance. They can um, walk down this gravel drive, which most of them probably will, because they'll come out here.
Okay, so there's, there's probably not much of a need for walking in traffic this way?
No, but everybody that, right now, to tell you the truth, they walk, it's flat, right?
Yeah.
So humans follow flat areas, it's like Disneyland, so they walk here, and then they walk straight to the store, so actually that. You know, they do use that, and I predict human behavior, I would say instead of going downstairs, people will stay on the flat terrain.
Well, there wasn't a, a gravel road to do indicated on your plan. Is that gonna just end at the side of the building, or is that gonna be a passageway to the.
Yeah, that's just access for the side of the building. It, it doesn't go through.
Is that an option?
Yeah, could that be a rule?
Yeah, I mean, it could, uh, it would kill some parking spots, um, you know, here, but I, you know.
I, I would think that that would maybe reduce the traffic off of.
Yeah, I don't know how, like, if people want two points of cars, I don't know how that works. People probably want one, I, like, identified entry instead of having multiple entries, but. But you know, traffic flow is great, so if you can have a site where you have different options, it's great, I just.
Well, Jeff, the top.
I don't know about my handicap.
The, the topography through here is not easy. So if you were to purchase this road through here, yes, you'd do two spaces, but you might gain them back here. But could you close that access off if you had this one, or is that, is that ridiculous?
Uh, yeah, no, I don't.
I mean, it's pretty steep.
Yeah, and then that's not showing pavement, so you might have some issues if you try to pave that, because I couldn't. If it's this hill, then I would wanna pave it.
Sure, sure.
This is just for like, maybe one car to get up here and go to the building.
Ninety-eight, uh, one, is it, one-ten, I mean, that's.
Yeah, you'd have an issue, uh, you'd have to, to do it right, honestly, you'd have to pave it, and um, you know.
It's steep, though.
Yeah, it's, and then I'm thinking, you know, green space is good, like, I'm kinda doing a lot of paving, so.
Yeah.
I'm trying to retain some green.
When you start discouraging people.
I know, I'm just trying to figure a way to sell the.
But it makes a nice walkway, honestly, like, it makes a nice avenue, to, you know, to walk through.
Yeah.
And if I could get this from Mick, that would be sweet, because then it would open up all, you know, possibilities, but. Right now, it's not, not on the table, so.
Anybody else?
Aye, aye, Celia Leopold, four twenty-six Washington Street. So, I think you showed last time we were here, and I, I've looked at the plan. That somebody, your neighbor might have a gravel drive here.
Yeah.
Could, is that a, um, something that's been there a long time? Could you put a couple parking spaces in here?
Uh, no, they, they have an easement, so actually this needs to maintain, uh, it needs to be open, it's, it's, they have an easement to travel across it.
Or could you put parking on a higher level, and then a set of stairs down, so you could pu- put more, like, parking here? So that, um, like, a ramp and parking here, and then a set of stairs, so that you have more spaces?
Yeah, you could add parking here, but it's very steep, so uh, there may be some uh, standards for that, it's not. Uh, it's not safe, obviously, to have parking on a slope, because it's pretty dramatic. This, you know, to, to create this parking, this is level, so we put a retaining wall in. So the only way really you could do this and do it right is move this retaining wall back here. And add more parking, but if you, if you factor in the travel width, which is twenty-four feet. To go back in there, I think you're gonna, I can't cross this easement, because that's actually a recorded easement. I really don't think you're gonna gain it, and you're gonna end up with more pavement, more runoff, a giant retaining wall. Um, it's really tough, because if you go out there and look at that site, it's a pretty steep hill. So this wall will probably end up being twelve feet, honestly, just by going in nine feet, I mean, going in eighteen feet. We still probably would end up with a twelve-foot wall there. So if you, if you try to create parking, you'd have to try to level it, which would be, mean, more retaining walls, more pavement. Um, be very difficult. And I like this option, keeping it green, because like, I could plant trees here, or, you know, do additional landscaping. So that gives me a little more options to have some green space.
The folks to the, the bunch of, of the, of the gravel, they, they use that as their driveway, okay?
Yeah, yeah, they park there.
In here?
Yeah, so we, I just drive around them.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why I like, this is not limited use. Because I can't have people depending on that, if they're gonna park their cars there, you just drive around them.
Right.
But if, if all my tenants were required to use this, you know, then I get issues with this guy.
Right.
You know, parking there, and I think, oh no, it's a single family home. So you have three cars, it's.
It's a duplex.
It's a, it's a.
Oh, is it duplex? Oh, it is, oh, I didn't even know that.
Thought it was single family home.
Brian?
Yeah, yep, Brian Pellerin, Carter Family Properties. I, part of your, uh, I waiver for the parking requirement is predicated on your assumption. That the kind of people who are going to rent a one-bedroom apartment are going to work nine-to-five jobs that won't be in conflict with a retail establishment. I really don't think that's accurate.
Half of them.
I mean, some, some portion of people are going to be childless couples with traditional nine-to-five jobs. But a significant portion of them are not. They're going to be, for example, the people who work at those retail establishments.
Right, yeah, totally.
I, so, you know, some of them, yeah, I don't think in this day and age, you can really, I rely on people. Especially people work one-bedroom apartments, I, not using those spots at the same time as a retail establishment. I mean, it'd have, it'd be tough enough having a lack of conflict with an industrial use. At least with an industrial use, you've got less density, you've got less people doing more stuff. You start putting in offices and retail into that, and you've really got a lot of people competing for the same spots. And as somebody who has two adjacent parking lots, I can see that being a problem.
Oh, totally, yeah. I think if you look at, you're right, though, everybody doesn't work the day shift. But if you look at the waiver, if you read the waiver letter, I've, I've actually tabbed it, so I basically said, all right, well. If half of the people work during the day, then my numbers still make it under the sixty-four. So I didn't say like everybody, you know, if you read the letter, I didn't use the calculations, everybody. But that's a fair estimate to say fifty percent of people probably work ninety-five, nine-to-five, that's conservative, because I, I bet mo- most people work like that shift. Um, but if you took half and said, all right, half are gonna be there during business hours, I'm still in compliance, you know, if the waiver's granted.
It also assumes every unit has two cars.
That's two cars, which a one-bedroom apartment, that's pretty conservative, because, you know, a lot of people now are sharing cars, but. That's one of the reasons I'm doing one-bedroom apartments, because I didn't wanna get in a big scene over there, uh, you know, with a bunch of cars and. You know, a bunch of people, you know, so I'm trying to.
It'll be in your lease agreements that they are limited to two spots, or?
Uh, yeah, they would probably be allowed to have two spots, and that would be it.
Hey, Brian, the other justification is that our parking requirements require two twenty-five spaces.
Right.
Per residential, it's probably unlikely that someone in a one-bedroom apartment is gonna have, you know. A, a third car, every other unit, so, you know, I, I, I think that's a, I think it's a fair, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable justification for a later. If they're one-bedroom units.
Um, Celia Leopold again, on those lines, is that point five for guests and visitors? Is there any allotment in the parking structure for guests or visitors, for the apartments? Like, I know every year, I go spend a couple weekends with my best friend who lives in an apartment complex with twelve units. And they have four to six visitor spaces, and each unit gets two spaces, so they must have like thirty parking spots there. So that's, in my mind, I'm thinking, you're dropping it from two spaces, which if you have a couple, that's two cars. And then they have company that comes, somebody comes to spend the night on their couch, where does that company park their car for the overnight?
Yeah, that's why there's overflow, so like, if you took, for instance, if half, well, look, okay, perfect example, overnight. So if a guest comes, generally there, it's overnight, that's when the issue might happen. So all those businesses, when you do the shared parking calculation, all those businesses aren't there, all the employees are away. So if you look at the employee spaces, um, well, it's in the letter, but I think it's something like thirty. Thirty-something spaces for businesses, so that would be your guests or overflow, uh, you know, in the evening. Um, so yeah, that would account for it. And again, if you, if you take the shared calculation. We've still halved it, just to be conservative, so that means, um, you know, you still have a little bit of play even within those figures. Because a lot of times people do a shared parking calculation, they say, okay, well, everybody's working nine-to-five, we've had that, and we still have four surplus spaces. But for overnight guests, um, because people are welcome and they have access to the building from both lots. So if it was a crazy, crazy night on Friday and everybody was having a party, and everybody had guests. You're still gonna have an empty lot down here, you know what I mean? So I think the overflow. Um, will really work with that flexibility if you take, that's why mixed-use buildings are, are kinda wiser development. Because you have live-work, you have that shifting of use, so that at night, the residential people are there, during the day, the business is there. So it really makes the building, uh, evens it out. Um, and I think that two point five is a requirement for a dwelling unit, and a dwelling unit could have six bedrooms, eight bedrooms. Uh, so in that case, you know, an eight-bedroom house, not that there's a lot of them, but say a five-bedroom house. You're talking, that could be four cars. So I think the point five really is there probably to sugge-. I didn't break the zoning, but probably to suggest that there could be more than two cars, um, typically in a larger. there could be more than two cars, um, typically, in a larger dwelling unit. So in my case, with a one-bedroom, I'm thinking I'm still, I might even be high at two, because, you know, nowadays, a lot of people share a car.
So, along those lines, have you thought about, I know this is, um, available at UNH, I've been through there lots. They reserve a couple spots for zip cars or ride-share. Have you considered putting in a space allocated for that? Whether it be like a zip car with a special sign that says, here lives a zip car, and somebody who doesn't have a car just, like, rents that one car?
Yeah, that'd be awesome. I mean, I think a zip car could park anywhere, you know, like, it's pretty much wide open. But yeah, no, I, I'm all about public transportation, or ride-sharing, anything like that would be cool.
And with the spaces going from, is it ten feet wide, or nine feet wide, you're asking?
Yeah, I'm asking to reduce it to nine, uh, because the ten-by-twenty, a lot of towns already can use that anymore, it's extreme, it's for like a truck, pickup truck type of thing, um, all the cars are smaller, more com- compact, and just less pavement. I mean, that's the way I look at it, so, um, yeah, I'm asking to reduce it.
Well, I have a question, I guess, for the board, and I'm not sure they can answer it. But this, um, Front Street has angled parking. Does the board know if those are ten feet wide or nine feet wide? Because I know with me, I have two children, and to open the doors and get my children in and out in a tight space, I'm constantly going into other parts.
I use the six-feet line.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna suggest you go and actually look at the, the parking spaces on Front Street that Lea Lea Pool's, uh, talking about, because if they are the same dimension, you might wanna reconsider, because they are.
Nine-by-eighteen, I don't know, no, you know, so I, 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 I think, I, I, I would, I would doubt they're nine-by-eighteen.
Especially if they're angled, uh.
I think that would just increase them, because it could be setting yourself up for.
Yeah, I think actually most, um, zone, are most, um, towns, and the angled are less. So usually the angles, um, nine.
The parking space is a little larger, they're former rotation, so.
Strike one degree.
When he's striking.
Yeah, I think the ten's actually not gonna take a change, though, so.
So, yeah, and I'm wondering about door width, it's like, when you open a door, how far does it open to? And is, are you covered? If you, in a nine-foot parking space with both doors open, are you going to be going over into the next parking space?
Yeah, well, like I said, the cars are smaller, but you know what, honestly, I think the ten, I'm not a, uh, parking engineer, but I think the ten, because when you do slanted spaces, usually they only require nine. And you've still gotta open your doors, so I think the ten is for turning, actually, so you can get into the space and tee it up, honestly, because usually when we do the slanted, and that's why we do it, uh, we only have to do nine. So I don't know if it's, uh, you know, I'm not a parking engineer, so, but that's just, uh, you know, my assumption.
Brian?
I'm wondering where you're getting this idea that cars are getting smaller.
Uh, energy efficiency, you've seen all the races up there?
They're definitely getting more efficient, but as of two years ago, trucks and SUVs surpassed cars in sales in the US. The overall size of cars, uh, has gotten slightly larger in the last ten years, and it's significantly larger than it was twenty years ago. Efficiency gains are way up, but as far as the physical size of cars, they're, cars are larger.
Yeah, I mean, I can't really comment on that, I'm not a auto manufacturer, but.
Well, it's just something to consider, I, you know, it's your parking lot, I, I have a personal preference against smaller, tighter spots. But that's no reason for you not to put them in, I was just curious if you had any actual source for this idea that cars are smaller.
Uh, that just seems to be the direction, only reason I, I, uh, we brought it up and we proposed this, because most towns are going in this direction. So, it just, it's an ordinance that they found is a little outdated based on what they're seeing. Um, so that's why we proposed it, because it's all, it, it seems to be ample. Uh, nobody complains with the nine-foot about doors hitting, uh, other cars, or, you know, navigation issues or things like that. So with a twenty-four-foot, um, lane, there's plenty of room to turn, um.
Might be best just to have our town engineer review this, and we could be here on that topic.
Yeah.
So.
I agree. Any other comments not about?
Parking.
Parking, yes.
Yeah.
I was hoping we could change gears for a second, and you could go over the drainage.
Don't think we're gonna cover that tonight, um, since this engineer's not here. Thank you.
You said it's twenty-four feet?
Nope, we're not gonna talk about parking.
Okay, sorry.
Lot size anymore, sorry. Anyone else? We're gonna close off the discussion, and I think. Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna continue this, we're gonna talk December, then you're gonna, you, you're gonna be ready to come back in December.
Yep, yeah, I'm gonna try to.
Sorry, so we, we.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry, we're gonna continue public hearing, um, until December. Alright, um.
Peter died. Make sure that Jay is aware of the meeting is, uh, do we?
So it'd be nice to have his comments before that, I'm sure he can power.
Yeah, totally.
Okay. We have a preliminary consult. Thanks so much. Mr. Tarian? Certainly have.
Sure, hello, my name is Jeff Leoff, I'm an engineer with Civil Consultants. Yep, and my first name is Jeff, G, it's G E O F F, and my last name's A L E V A. So what I've got, I'm looking for some guidance from the town, uh, the board, is that, um, the Tarians, um, live at four twenty-seven Silver Street, and it's surrounded back, um, on all three sides by the cemetery. And the lot that they have is one-point-three-four acres in size, um, serviced by a municipal water. And what they would like to do would be to have and add a dwelling unit, another single-family home, out in the back, out here for them to, uh, build a new house for themselves out here, and keep this house up front, and not do it with a subdivision. Looking through the ordinance regulations, it looks like, um, a duplex is possible, but the way the ordinance is written, it, and I'm looking for guidance here, it kinda indicates that the building has, that a duplex has to be in one building. And I'm wondering where the justification comes from that, as to, as to looking at why that is the case, um, when there's, when the zoning's kind of lot, lot area and land area that way. Because that, those, and it's, and I kinda went through a couple of the, the different sections of the ordinance, uh, to look through the, especially Section Eight, which talks about special provisions, and talks about, um, dwellings, two-family dwellings and multiple-family dwellings. But, and then you look at the definitions, and it talks really, it says, you know, in the same unit, we're in the urban residential zone that is there to promote density, aden- density. And, um, just, it, it's a little unique, I, granted, I don't do a lot here, I'm rather, um, but it's unique that it's not allowed to have a, an individual unit in, in the density aspect of it like this. As other towns do, but that doesn't mean anything, but, um, I'm just looking for what the, what you folks have found in the past, or have looked in the past, uh, for a lot area that, you know, a lot that, you know, it's a bigger lot. The minimum lot size zoning in, in this area is fifteen thousand square feet, this lot is fifty-eight thousand square feet. And what they're looking to do is just, is add one dwelling, an additional dwelling, that they have two dwellings.
So freestanding building.
Freestanding building.
What's their opposition to a subdivision?
Well, I think, uh, the way it looks here is if I look at where, uh, I would wanna, the minimum frontage would be a hundred feet.
I can't see your frontage.
Yeah, okay. I've got two, two-fifty for frontage.
Is that a house?
That's a house.
Oh, so you don't have.
Yeah, and here's a, and here's a garage. So I'd have to go, if I go a hundred feet, I'm out to here, I'm running right through the garage. If I come out over here, then I'm gonna create a situation where this house is not conforming. But it, it's, it appears to me if I go in to the ordinance and I build a little tiny connector, I could build a house here. And it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense, I don't know if it's, if it's something that we need to go to, that you go to the zoning board to get a, a variance or a waiver for, from that aspect, and then come back to you folks? Because clearly it has to come back to the zoning board.
If you get a variance, you don't have to come to us.
Oh, I don't?
Well, it'd be a condo. I mean, that's not what you could do, you know, you could record a condo document without coming to us.
Without coming to you folks, yeah.
If you got a variance, to put a second unit on it, and you wouldn't come to us, then it's not a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision, yeah.
But I don't think we can, it, it is, it, it's not, we're not the only town.
No, I know.
It's a weird thing, and I've seen duplexes con- connected by a thirty-foot wall underground. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, you, you could stretch it.
They, right, they could build a forty, I suppose, they could build a long concrete wall underground. The reality is, they gotta think about resale, you know? That's stupid, no one's gonna want that, so I think the best.
What if it's meant to be kept in the family?
What's that?
What if it's meant to be kept in the family?
I mean, because we did, we did a little concept that, that basically shows, you know, that everything would stay here, and the house would be positioned back in this corner, meeting, meeting the, the, you know, all the requirements for setback, and, you know, all that aspect for, for lot density. I'm just, I'm just, you know, I wanna, kind of, if we didn't have to go through a subdivision, whi- which would involve relocating or tearing down the garage, to, to.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
I, I guess, you know, I mean, I, I, you might be wise to talk to Tom Clark and say, you know, what kind of a connection do I need to, to call this a duplex, you know? A variance might be easier, though.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't know why we have unique situations.
It'd be cleaner, too, with a variance.
It'd be cleaner, I mean, I think it'd be cleaner just to get a variance, and it certainly looks like you have ample land, ample frontage, but to contrive something is sort of stupid.
Exactly, that's why I wanna come to the board, we could do a little connector, and be like, this isn't not what they want.
And I know you don't wanna keep it in the family, but what if you wanna sell it, and then it's weird.
Yeah.
You know, um, I, I would rather see you, um, try to get a variance, um, you know, and then whether you do it by a condominium, you know, just condominiumized, or just have a second unit on there, deal a condo later.
Yep.
You get a variance, the zoning board has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
I think that's some of the most reasonable.
Unless you wanna build a town road.
Yeah.
pave the cemetery.
No, we're good.
Whatever we gotta do, listen, I wanna build the house.
I think it's easy, cheap. Uh, I mean, I don't know if it's easy, but it's, you'll find out very quickly whether or not you get it, you have ample land.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping, we have more than what we need.
Yeah, absolutely, buy a lot, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and trying to position it, you know, back on the property, it makes, it makes the whole property a lot nicer.
I know.
It doesn't make it look all confined and constricted.
Sounds like they're just trying to, you know, turn everybody's zoning board, saying that's not how we know.
Well, there are, there are other properties, uh, we got an exemption, uh, a waiver from the zoning board.
Oh, it's ZBA.
Sorry, I don't, I think they're precedent.
Oh, okay, alright, okay. So the idea is, is to see the code office and talk to them, and, and try to work at that, and see, the, that's the process to go through the zoning board?
Oh, no, no.
Or talk to Sarah, that might be the easier way, just schedule a, a, you know, a variance.
Okay.
If you don't wanna go to the ZBA route, you would talk to code enforcement, figure out what sort of.
But I think he's gonna make it connect the two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that's not what we want, I think the idea is look at a variance and, and work at that, that's what I.
You can email him, he's sort of his own website.
Okay.
It's my last name, it's not his, though.
Which is what he is.
Yeah. Perfect, that's what we'll do. That makes the most sense, yeah.
Well, I think it's the cleanest.
I think it's the cleanest, yeah, I mean, for, for, and it's a unique situation, because this is not your typical lot size that's down in that, in the, in the, the village area, a lot of them are much smaller, very minimal frontage. On that, this is a unique property, surrounded by the, by the cemetery that has two-hundred.
We have a lot of unique shaped lots in the village, I should say that.
Yeah. Well, this one's blessed, because it has size to it, for sure.
How soon are you looking to build?
I was hoping to be in there for Thanksgiving.
We would like to start as soon as possible, we have our, um, middle son and his wife and two grandkids living with us.
So I'm dying to.
So, that's our, our plan is to let them stay in our house, and we're gonna then move out and have another home. Uh, and like you said, it's, we wanna keep, uh, it's his family, I'm sorry, but.
I wanna keep it, I definitely wanna keep it.
But if and when you do sell it, it's gotta have some sort of, you know, you need two homes.
I'm sorry.
Are you gonna be able to start it this winter?
Obviously, I mean, right now, we've been blessed with this weather, um, but we're in New England, we're gonna get frost. I, I probably won't start this now till spring, to be quite honest.
I'm just asking because to try to, to see how fast it meets me into the ZBA.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it is, the holidays are coming up, it's kinda complicated.
Right.
Get it formed.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, at least we can know what direction we're gonna.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
It's you, Jeff. Does, does anyone have the agenda in front of them? I know that.
Yeah, so the next is approved, and then it's on us. So there's two minutes to approve, uh, September, November, I mean, September, November.
Why didn't you just, I was read them.
I read them, yeah.
It were, it changed, maybe.
Yeah, so John had some changes, so, um, I've never experienced having to be changed, but. So do you want me to make the changes before we approve?
Um, if we vote to approve with the changes.
Okay.
So what are the changes?
So, so the change was something of a, like.
It was basically like the description of how he recused himself for the last.
So, the, the issue was, the proposed minutes said, I recuse myself, recusal implies a conflict of interest. Instead, I abstain.
Okay.
As you did tonight.
As I did tonight.
No, I think you're wrong, you think I'm wrong. Well, I think abstaining, you'd be abstaining from the vote, I think you're recusing, you're recusing yourself from, from, from taking part in the discussion and the voting.
Okay, well, that's.
That's what I, that's what, I, I mean, that's what I.
You recused yourself on the basis that it might come before another court to sit on, is how I was interpreted.
I abstained, what I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, he would have participated in the conversation.
And vote, you know, however, when, when, when the, when the vote was taken, or a vote, you know?
But he didn't participate in the conversation, and he is a resident, so he has the right to sit at the table and listen, so I think that he can abstain, but I think it's also safe sometimes to recuse, there can be no claim.
I don't remember, I don't remember you talking, I don't remember.
Conflict.
No, he didn't.
I think you said the answer.
I didn't say the word, no.
No, he didn't participate. Well, I mean.
Maybe it doesn't, maybe I'm thinking.
Whatever words will make, I think.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Whatever you're comfortable with, but I think, I, recusal is more.
You went beyond abstaining, you actually.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine.
But if you recuse, it can't be accused of bias in any sense, you can't have recusation. Abstaining, it could be say you perhaps put influence on people.
And then then vote.
And then then vote, to recuse is the safest.
Okay, sure, so.
To excuse yourself without bias, without prejudice.
I think you're better off with that.
Yeah, I think this makes sense.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
He recused himself, and then at the bottom it says, when the vote was taken, that, um, the approval, the motion was approved, and this we hadn't been abstaining. I think that makes sense.
Great, alright, great, great, that's fine.
I appreciate your concern.
And I didn't put in the part about them waving it, because.
Sure, that's fine.
They don't have the authority, really, if you already recused yourself.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Was there a second change or no?
I've, I've withdrawn it, the whole, so we'll just go back.
Okay, so September's.
I'll make the, the motion, Tim.
So it was second?
Second.
All in favor of approving September's minutes? Aye. Aye? Aye. The ayes have it, um, October's meeting minutes?
You didn't really have a change, or was it just that part?
Actually, I think based on what you've said, I think.
There's no change.
There's no change.
I moved to accept the October.
The second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, no, no, uh, all opposed, none opposed. Great, okay, uh, is there any other new business? Very none.
What about correspondence?
Uh, correspondence, I got a letter from Attorney Radigan in the mail, which we already looked at. Sorry, there was something from the city of Rochester, which doesn't make sense to me. Notice of a public hearing, um, to be held Thursday, November ninth, concerning the following. Echo Site and T-Mobile applicant for a request for a special exemption for construction of the wireless. for construction of the wireless communication facility, Meterborough Road in Rochester. I don't know why this is coming to a end this week.
They may have deemed it a uh project of potential regional impact.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have before from Rochester.
Sunnydale, I think, sent us a letter when Sunnydale was being developed, we had some, an opportunity to be.
Okay, if you're planning to attend the meeting, have paperwork you wish to have reviewed? If you're not planning to attend.
The other thing is, if the town is all for, put it all on a land, a piece of land in a bucket, I don't think so. How about I?
We've gotten, we've gotten this um. Meterborough Road looking, uh.
No, no, it's, it's like way over on the like, the west side of Rochester.
Looking all the time, actually, to go to the farm. Oh, it's, it's next uh. Farm. It abouts farm.
Yeah, it's like not anywhere near us.
December fifth.
On the way to.
This part of that.
Oh, no, this is, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just down the road, which is interesting, you can go to the farm butter and the farm at all times.
Correct.
Which is on the farm side of the line.
To it, yeah.
On your tower, okay.
Yeah.
Um.
I need, I need the second.
Oh, I need the second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
We're, our.
The first did.